That where I get up?
That's you.
Supposed to go over here?
Yeah, tell us who you are.
Pat Weider and I have a property on 124 Lakeshore. And this spring I became aware of when I was up here after a rain, that after they redid the street there, that it wants to flow on my neighbors cement pad. And then it makes a direct line to right, right outside of my house where it empties off. And it's never happened before. I've been up here for 15 years roughly. And we've never had issues before until that street got redone last fall. And I was just wondering, is there something that can be done? I mean, like, the engineer, I can't believe an engineer and a contractor would let that go. Because it's, his ridge is at least six to eight inches lower than any property along there. That's, nobody else has any issues with water flowing onto their property because everybody else is properly. But for some reason that 40 foot in there got flattened out. And now the water wants to run on there. And I was just wondering, did the engineer, I mean, I can't believe that they did not know that.
Max requested us not to do that.
Well, that might be, but does a citizen always get what they want from the city or whatever? I mean, that's a pretty big thing having that water come on. I can't believe he knew that that was going to be the grade of the street where the water would flow on his property. Nobody would want that, nobody would want that.
And also fixed by his garage so the water didn't go in there too. And we've done that in the past, but it turned out bad for you. I don't, I don't have an answer how to fix it.
Well, you were here one other time to talk about this, right?
I was here, no, I've never been here.
He's never been here.
When did we talk about, we talked about this at the council?
We've talked about it because he's called me.
Yeah.
We talked a little.
I think I've talked to about all of you who've been there.
Yeah.
One hundred.
Well, yeah, we have, we had the, the engineer has been there, Tim Pointe has been there. And then there was conversations with Max. And it kind of went downhill a little bit. And so then the attorneys got involved and that's kind of where it's sitting right now. We've been advised via our city attorney that, you know, basically everything is supposed to go through Dave. So, and that's kind of where it's sitting right now.
So we can't put a curb up there?
That's all it would take is a curb. I mean, like digging up that whole street, no, all it takes is a six or eight inch curb along there. And it would take care of it, I think.
Even a three inch curb would take care of it, maybe.
Well, it would just go to your, make it level like everybody else's along there.
Right.
And that would be your six inches or eight inches or whatever. That's all it would take.
Right, I agree.
There's actually about a six, it's about eight inches, six, eight inches, whatever that wall that you talked about that goes all the way.
Well, that's another deal.
Yep, but that's technically on our property.
Right.
It's on the inside of the pins. And we could even go in with some like curb type things and put them there and pin them in until, you know, at least as a short term thing.
Well.
To try and redirect that water as a curb, you know, and then cop it or whatnot.
You'd have to do something because pour new concrete, old concrete, that ain't gonna do it.
It's gonna be mess, yes.
That'll be, that'll be gravel.
The conversation that we had that day turned to, you know, because we did what Max had requested. And then it was a matter of consideration of a cop share that we would, you know, that something. And the conversation went with that it was the city's problem and that we should just fix it. We have plenty of money. And then that turned into a not so good experience with myself and Jason was a witness. And so that's, Jason's not here, but Jason was a witness that day. And then that's where, you know, the attorney tended to get involved and, you know.
Well, but, but that happened, that's six months ago. And nothing's happened, I mean, it's just they stagnated.
Well, I mean, there's been conversations that you aren't aware of, but yes.
Yeah, but I mean, nothing's.
At the end of the day.
There's no plan to fix it or.
I can't say that we don't have a plan, but it's now, I mean, there's been conversations. It's just where we're going from here on how it goes forward.
So how does it go forward?
Well, our city attorney is not here to technically speak.
But wouldn't the engineer or the contractor have known that that's not going to work in that area? I can't believe the engineer knew, had, I mean, he had to have some kind of a plan or something about when they got to Max's property if that's what, you know, I'm sure.
I mean, there's a lot of changes with that project when, when it was happening. I mean, so the idea that, you know, different things with this, this well and stuff like that. I don't think that they envisioned or else we would have tried to put a additional storm drain or something. That they would envision that it's doing what it's doing. And part of it is that, you know, it's going off the property pooling on some very poor concrete. And then it's unfortunately, there's, it's, the direction that it's going via that poor concrete is towards your property.
Right.
You know?
But it's still, the flow, the flow of the street is still, that's where it's all starting.
I mean, it's, it's leading towards the lake. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of stuff that, you know.
No, there's just not enough pitch there on that side. Then, I mean, the water's going to come that way, there's just no pitch there to keep it into the center to go down to that drain. I mean, but.
If we put a curb where his footing's at right now, towards that, put a curb there, will that make the water worse than you? If we stop in his property, it's just going to come right down and make it worse?
No, because I'm already six, eight inches up. If you matched it along with me and took it all the way over like where, the other day, Kenobi made that whole 40 foot in there or whatever it is. I mean, there's no way that water.
The problem isn't where his steps aren't going down, down the north side.
It's five feet back, it's to the north.
Where it's going on, we're pulling on Max's and coming down that side is where it's all coming out.
I mean, I can run a garden hose up there by Kenobi's house and you, the water just, just goes down there and makes it out right down to that property.
Can we visit with our city attorney if we can do that?
Should be able to, yeah.
We're going to do something we can't.
I agree.
I mean, this.
Was you, you were there? We talked, yep, that day you and I drove around, we drove by there and talked about this as a problem.
Why did the, and I have one other question, why did the contractor not tear out that eight, 10 inches of old concrete on, on that wall there? Or foundation or whatever that is? I mean, they had it dug out about two feet down, you know, to redo those water and sewer lines in there. But, I mean, but they left that eight or 10 inch wall in there, which was on city property.
I think it's way deeper than that.
Well, I'm sure it is, I bet it's five, six feet.
Right, so, I mean, city property, but at the end of the day, it was probably a structural foundation from the, the structure that was there at one point in time.
Probably.
So I can't speak to why the foundation was left. I know that there was some, you know, discussion, but I'd have to talk to, you know.
But I imagine when you guys had the contracts or the bids go out to the different people that were going to do that street.
I don't know that they was aware that that existed and that it was that deep.
No, but it was, I bet the contract probably read, removal of all existing city properties concrete. Well, they, that did not get removed. And I just can't.
Well, and I don't, seeing along there, you can say city property, it's probably in the right of way. But those, those structures that were from back in the eons of time, you know, were probably, you know.
No, I understand, I understand.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the, you know, at the end of the day, you know, I can't, I can't speak for, you know, why it wasn't. I mean, the councils certainly.
I mean, even if they were to, even if they were to build that curb up, that piece of there is still got to come out. Either that or cut off a foot or 16 inches down below where it is now. So, I mean, it ain't going to be a fun deal, but.
All that, I can, I can talk with Dave and see if we can try and put a plan together and go from there. I, I guess, you know, the conversation prior to this was that we didn't feel that was, because we did what Max had wanted us to do at the time. And this was before I was here, that we did, you know, in all of the conversations about that entire project, that Max was involved and we did what he had requested because he was going to build a structure there at some point in time and didn't want a curb. That it's some, you know, that, that not necessarily this is all on the city's responsibility to replace or fix. And I think that's part of where the conversation sits is, you know, whose responsibility is it, so.
Well, I just thought I'd bring it to you guys' attention, but, I mean, this, within sandbags, they're going to, you know, they're about, two weeks after the second snow, they're going to be ready for it. You know, and then here we go again next spring.
See if we can do something better than next spring. If not till next spring, at least we can get something, a plan, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, the water's, it's just got to be built up so it goes straight. That's all it's got to happen. I mean, you don't need to tear up the whole, in my opinion, you don't need to tear the street up and all that.
Yeah, I mean, there, yeah, there's been conversations about how it could get fixed or what would be that plan. It just, you know.
Yeah, it just needs to be built up, is all, that's my opinion. But thank you for your time and I just thought I'd bring it.
I'll stay with you.
Alright. Anybody else ready? Is that the end of Mike?
That's how you can go.
That's all we're getting. Alright, thank you.
Stay for the rest if you want.
Nah, it's fine. Thank you.
My name's Greg Smith, Black Squirrel coming in town, I'm the business owner. Reason I'm here tonight, I was here a couple of years ago, we talked about the water pressure up on the northwest side of town. You know, we know that's been a problem. But since this time, that time, there's been other problems come up with our water that I want to make you aware of, that we need to address. And what's happening is down along Main Street corridor, it's been really bad for a while. But it's starting to branch out into other places in town. It is this sandy stuff that's in the water, it's real fine sand. And it's clogging up water meters all over town. I get at least two calls a week of people saying they don't have any water pressure. First thing I tell them, call the city. You know, how long's it been since your water meter's been replaced? And so that's what they'll do, and Jason's not here, but he can attest to how many he has replaced lately because of this stuff that is in our water. In some places, it's costing customers a lot of money. I know Nate Moore with his apartments, he's probably spent over $2,000 that, I mean, I like the money. But it's cost him that because I'll have to go in and replace the flush valves in his toilets in the apartments. It just clogs them up and there's nothing I can do except replace the flush valve. The washing machine hoses, it clogs the washing machine hoses up. It's crazy how bad it is. And you've got to take the aerators off the faucets, clean the stuff out of those. The hardware hang building, the old building there, that meter, it clogged it up. And those apartments, they didn't have water at all for a while. You know, and they're not going to complain because first thing they'll say is, well, you owe me a rent, you know? But Terry Reese is across the street, he's had all nine of his meters replaced. And couldn't believe how much better the flow was on those meters. You know, there's been other customers in town that go have the meter replaced, well, then all that stuff goes into their house. Because the new meters that we're getting allow more to go through than the old meters did. So the new meters are going to last longer, but all that crap's going to go into the customer's home. And what they'll do is it'll start clogging their water softeners. That I've seen happen already. So first thing we do is turn the water softener on bypass, bam, it's fixed, they got great water pressure again. And you can't get it out of the softener, best thing you can do is replace the whole water softener at that point. So the more stress we put on our water system, the worse this is going to get. And like I said, right now, the main street area is where it's the worst. I've talked to the fire department, they get it in their trucks. And they've had to change the drains on the tanks of their trucks so they can drain the tanks to their trucks when they get back. It clogs the fire nozzles, nozzles on the hoses, and then they don't get the mist they need to fight the fire. I mean, and if it gets worse, what's going to happen then? You know, we've got a new bar going in here in town. And if they draw a lot of water, they're going to have problems too. You know, a couple ideas that we could do is when they put new water meters in, especially in commercial buildings, we could put a strainer in with them. I know down in Omaha, when I was a plumber down there, we did it on almost every commercial building. Put strainers in with the meters and then the strainer would collect all that crap. And you'd clean the screen of the strainer out or back flush it and it'd take care of it. It wouldn't go into the building and ruin things inside the building. You know, I just think as time goes, if we don't do something with our water system, it's just going to get worse and worse. And I'd kind of like some direction from you is to far, is what I can tell my customers. You know, ideas that I can tell them what we are doing, if there is a plan, you know, to put in a new well or something with the pump house or what we could do so that I can give them an honest answer instead of just talking jive to them, you know? And because right now I'm doing everything I can to keep peace and not bad mouth anybody, you know, and say anything bad. Jason and I are friends, we communicate about it all the time. And, you know, I just want to make you aware of it because something needs to be done.
So the stuff is coming from our well?
It, it has to be, it's coming from the well. It's got to be coming from the well. You know, they, he talked about a sugar sand that they quit using another well. Well, I think it's coming out of this well too, and that's the last well we've got, you know?
And we do have a contract, in fact, I think we're supposed to have, start meeting next week with working on what our next step is for the proposal plan for, you know, a new well. And trying, you know, come up with what that plan is going to be, what that's going to entice with the water plant.
Okay.
You know, and those kinds of things.
And it's something we need to hit the hot button on because the more businesses we get to town, the more stress we're going to put on the system we've got. You know, and even the homes around town are just getting bigger. The more usage you have at your house, the worse it's going to be for you as a homeowner, you know? And it's, it's not fair to anybody that, you know, say you live far away from downtown at the other side of the lake, you don't notice it. Because everybody else gotten all that crap before it gets to you. You know, it's not fair to the people and the businesses here in downtown that they've got to fight this problem and pay the, what it costs to get it fixed all the time. You know, and it's just, and it's only going to get worse, like I said. You know, there's, there are a few things we could do, you know, like I said, why strainers on the new businesses? Or even, you know, a new home that gets built, if it's a big home, you can just require that to go in with the meter. You know, I mean, it's, it's up to you guys to decide what you can do to help this.
Is there a way where we could do that in our water treatment plant too, put it over some strainer? Do you know?
I don't know. I mean, it would take a heck of a unit to do that with the amount of flow you've got going through there. I, I mean, I, yeah, you could do it, like I said, in each individual building. I mean, I'd recommend it at the fire station for sure, if that is the problem. I mean, that's what I've heard, you know, in the bigger businesses, the new bar, things like that. Campground, that's going to start getting affected by it next summer, I can almost guarantee it, with as bad as it's getting. You know, like I said, I get two calls a week from homeowners. You know, and that's not the northwest side of town problems that we already know about. You know, up there, I just tell, welcome to the northwest side of town. But, you know, I just want to make you all aware of it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
You bet.
Thank you. You bet.
Thanks, Greg.
Yep, we'll see y'all.
Okay, consent agenda, any additions or corrections? If not, a motion to approve. Second?
I'll second.
Rule call.
Was that you, Whitey, on the second?
Yeah.
Walman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Okay, no utilities report?
I actually haven't.
Okay.
Um, let's see, they disconnected the power up here at the redemption center, treating it, prepared for demolition. Changed out two of the LED lights at the library, which involved, they had to, there's something special about it. They had to change something in the panel, so it was a little bit more elaborate than just changing light bulbs. They pulled, pulled some meters, both electrical and water. Repaired a curb stop on Chris Appart Drive that a contractor had, had broken through. Finished painting storm drains, they cut down a tree on Madison. Fixed bathhouse, three doors they were having an issue getting them closed. Fixed the grill on the backhoe, changed the oil pan on the yellow truck. Made brackets for the UV lights to hang on when, when they pull the bulbs next month. Out at the wastewater treatment plant, they looked at a transformer in Acreage, they had an electrical safety meeting. They worked on the storm drain down at the park by the lake, and I think that was just more or less looking at Lon, you know, and helping him a little bit. Changed out the panel on the red dump truck, pushed out the brush pile. Worked on the electrical for Mabes, boring the interduct and grave and hooked it up, my understanding, I believe.
Yeah, there's an issue with it.
There's an issue, okay. Electrical for the community center, trying to make sure that we would get power to the, a flag display and also the statues. Moved the picnic tables at the campground with the garbage cans. Blew out the water lines and winterized the bathhouses at the campground down by the lake in Speaker Park. They also replaced a couple hundred spigots at all the campground sites down in the campground. Fixed a couple of the door hinges at the campground. They started jutting sewers but ran into an issue at the water plant. So that's kind of been put on hold, I believe. Swept the streets and I know that they started working on cutting the asphalt for the Dennison Beach project. So that was what Jason gave me for a report. He is, and if you're curious, he's actually, he's trying to fulfill his commitment on getting a CDL, so that's what he's doing, so.
Any questions? City administrator report.
Kay and I attended the IMFOA conference last week, came back with some good things. Attended the housing summit at Twin Lakes with Whitey and John. Worked on some electrical compliance reports. I continue to work on the state reports that are due December 1st so that we can go over them. And I've been going through all of our urban renewal plans and updates and things over the several years and looking at the TIP ordinances, making sure that we're all in compliance due to just knowledge base and a few issues that had came up, so.
Thank you. Christian, will you use the report tonight?
Yeah, not a whole lot till we pull, we got all the vehicles back, they'll be calmed and that's about it, so.
Bill, thanks.
Yep, and it, this is not a report, but this is a, at the next council meeting, the council's going to go into closed session. We're going to have the city manager's evaluation at that time. Before you guys go, you might have a form for everybody to take home and go through it so we have questions. Okay, building permits, we're going to take, Ray Hughie, John, he's got a change of plans. We have two, Nick, Dave and James Denver, they all passed, Eric?
Yeah.
I have a question on, Nick says you're here. In your building permit, there's no setbacks written here. Says rear yard setback to overhang not applicable and right side yard setback not applicable. Tenter, the alley not applicable. And then in your plans, it doesn't show how far you are from the property lines.
Okay, I can update it for you. When Kemba and Chris came out, essentially the property's been surveyed, so they measured in and put it within the footprint. I don't remember what the setbacks are off the top of my head, I think it's seven on the side.
Looks 12 on the front, then you're on corner lots, so it's 12 on each side on the corner. And six towards tanks. The backside where your new guest house is, that really doesn't have.
Yeah, there's only one little section back there that, that kind of applies to it.
So that X in your concrete driveway, is that your pin?
Yeah, that was actually the pin that we had surveyed. That was all done within like the last four months.
Yeah, I seen, I seen it, I made time to go out there. And that's where your garage and your two-story addition is going to be.
Exactly, essentially where that overhang, carport and the attached garage, it's not going to the full length of where the garage is now, it's actually a little bit inside that.
Right, but, so, I was fortunate enough, one of the contractors was there working when I was there. And we kind of, we did put a string up, but we eyeballed, but you're not going to be six foot from tank side if you're coming 20 foot off your house.
So I actually meant with John right before I came up, he actually measured from the wrong point. So he's, he said we're six, six from that point. It was basically from that little jut on the wall, he is not accounting for that part of it. So there's a little piece that kind of comes in and out.
Okay.
He was measuring from the outside, not that inside.
So I just want to make sure so we don't have issues in the future, but we don't have nothing on our plans.
Yeah, definitely, no, I missed that when I put that in there.
Motion to approve the building permits. So, rule? Second?
Second.
Rule call.
Walman?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, the library board has a new trustee, Kaylee First, we need a motion to approve that regulation.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Rule call.
Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Walman?
Yes.
Can we extend the street closures so we get on, what is it, Fourth Street, is it? This is one that we need to spook out, can we motion to approve that closure?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Rule call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Walman?
Yes.
I know there's no good news on the aerator at the water plant, but I feel there is some.
So in front of you is the quote that Jason got to replace all of the little white balls that if you guys all saw a picture or had the ability to witness on Friday afternoon. It's, I mean, it's, this costs, I mean, it's close to $17,000, but we don't have choice. So Jason was getting them ordered and on their way as fast as they can. So, yeah, I, you know, you guys all saw, I mean, I think most of you saw it, I don't know, I don't know if everybody saw it on Friday, but I think the majority of you all had the ability to see it and, you know.
How far did they get in knocking any out, did they, have they done anything since Friday afternoon?
I think they worked on it some more today, I believe. I don't, I'll be honest with you, I don't know how far they got because I know that they, someone had to go over and work on Dennison Beach today.
It seemed like once they got hold of the Jack Hamer thing from Dakota, it was moving along a little bit better.
Right, yeah, so, and I don't know how, you know, I just saw the picture, so I don't know how far up and down all of that goes, so.
I was going to say, what's it going to take to clean inside of that housing?
They, Jason has talked to Jerry and is trying to get some, an approved chemical that we can use to, yes. So, I mean, we have to, he's got, then his comment today when I talked to him on the phone, he asked to get approval from the DNR to be able to use it. So, we're, I know he's in the process of trying to get that all taken care of.
I know, I talked to Lon Bush yesterday and he said when they cleaned that unit, it wasn't done the proper ways. It kept it clean. Sounds amazing.
So he's got these balls ordered, it's not the whole unit, it's just the balls that we have to get them balls out of there, then what, if it was to go back in there?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we got to have it. Do we want to back up and talk about Mabes electrical thing?
They dropped the box on the neighbor's property.
Yeah, and it's not the right grade height either, right?
The grade up front by the street, I mean, I don't know, I have to ask John if they've done.
He's the one that pointed it out to me, he says it's higher than the siding on the house.
Yeah, there's, there's a little dip right now, it's going to create a little puddle in Scott and Tank's yard, our neighbor's next to us. And then the box is about six feet over on the property right now.
So it's the box that we put out there?
Yeah, it's the grade for the electrical.
Yeah.
But is there an easement through there for that, do you know?
Not the dime dollar.
Or is that grade just for your house?
They just did that for us.
Okay, but there's not, no expansion there, so we don't need an easement, that it's just for yours, okay?
Okay, I'll have to check into it because I don't know why they would have dropped it on some of these properties without.
Yeah, I, I'm assuming that they just, I mean, the way that house sits, I think they probably assumed it was all our yard. But I guess we assume that they would drop it on the property.
I'll have to check into it, I'll, I'll talk to, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, essentially if it can just be moved over about six feet straight lap, you're fine. Or straight south, I guess it'd be, so. Yeah, we need to.
Toward, toward your house.
Yeah, towards the house.
It can be fixed, no problem, no problem. Okay, we have a pool of the engagement letter from Piper Sandrider Company.
So basically this is just, it's an engagement letter so that Travis can go out and get to the area banks and get our quote on the GL loan. Just gives him basically approval to do that and talk on our behalf. So that's what this is for. We had done one previously and that was basically for him to do some financial advising for us. And this is actually for him to be able to discuss on our behalf with local banks and.
So basically, this is just, it's an engagement letter so that Travis can go out and get to the area banks and get our quote on the GL loan. Just gives him basically approval to do that and talk on our behalf, so that's what this is for. We had done one previously, and that was basically for him to do some financial advising for us, and this is actually for him to be able to discuss on our behalf with local banks and different things to try and get, you know, the best interest rate and stuff to negotiate for the GL loan.
Motion to approve the engagement letters?
I'll make it.
Second? Rule call.
Was that you, Dale? Jensen?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Can we motion to go into closed session?
I'll second it.
Rule call. Maggie, would you stay? Thanks, Greg.
Happy to see you here. All the Edo, that's his brother.
Yeah, I couldn't find my seat to write it down, so I was looking.
Skip over the one hundred and forty, or was I just not paying attention?
Oh, they approved it.
We approved it.
Oh, yeah, I must not have been paying attention.
Walden?
Your meetings are so intense.
Say yes.
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Thanks, Greg. Do you have a second? So tell me about what are your, what you're putting, you want leaning stuff, or something like that? Oh, this is a good, like, how stupid and ugly happens when I stay...